I'll call this meeting to order. To do our invocation tonight, to be Pastor Adam Cook, the Car and Baptist Church, and do the pleasure of leeches of flag in the United States of America, to be Petty Officer Roberts, Lieutenant Ramsey, United States Navy.
Last prayer, having a quality vow before this afternoon, we thank you for freedom that we can be called Americans, we thank you for all that you give us, we thank you most of all for the liberty of our faith, God, that we can share it with others, or I pray for this city and for this town, God, that we would be, uh, an example to others. We pray that our officials, God, that they be led by you, pray for our people, God, that they would be guided through the power of God, that you would always ask us, we not do as we would do, that we would do as you would have us do, God, we ask that you forgive us of our sins, I pray you bless me upon this, and may everything that we as God's people would do, pray going to your name, forgive us for our failures, in Jesus Christ and we ask you, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys, uh, if you want to say for the rest of me, you can, if not, you can leave me anytime, thank you. I want to welcome everybody to the Loudoun City Council meeting. I'm sitting in for Mayor Harris, he has gone to, uh, on a mission trip with Bloodland Baptist Church, uh, he'll return here next month. If you want to bring anything before council, uh, please do so, and I ask you to come to the podium, state your name, and where you live. One more thing I'd like to acknowledge, uh, this is, uh, Attorney Fry's birthday, we're going to wish him a happy birthday.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor.
And we'll move into the citizen app input.
My name's Ken Schultz, I live on Baldberry Street, in the Water Street of Loudoun. Mayor, Vice Mayor, I want to thank you, and I would also, uh, appreciate you giving us a chance to speak. I'm here to speak tonight, going, again, as we've talked about, is the county coming and requesting for that property down on Brooklyn. You as the city council have been elected to oversee the city's businesses, and be good stewards as well, of the properties and the finances of the city. About two weeks ago, I spent an hour and a half with the city manager, Ty Ross, and we discussed a lot of things, the desires of the city, and the growth plans, and things like that, and I appreciate him taking that time, uh, discussing that with me. But, you know, the biggest thing that I see that we have is, you're coming here and you're raising our property taxes to raise money for roads, and now you're, our city and utilities combined paid a hundred fifty thousand dollars for a piece of property that you're going to just give away. I'm not against that property being sold to them, you know, but you're going to give a hundred fifty thousand dollars on your raising our taxes, you're not being fair, and you're not being good business people to the city taxpayers here. So, I'd ask you, you probably already made your minds up, some of you, you know, but I would also ask you to reconsider that. Councilman James, you've asked us many times, we need to come here and speak, that we've got concerns and our opinions, but, boy, you know how to help though, so I appreciate that, and it's one reason why we're here. I did speak to Commissioner Beers on this, and he has told me that the insurance company for the county is going to restore the courthouse downtown. I've also spoke with Representative Lowell Russell's office, about the fear of the county seat being moved to the lower city if we don't give them this property. The spokesperson for, Representative Russell assured me that it would take years for that to happen, and then with the, also with the county insurance company, already saying that they will restore the warehouse, the chances it would be very unlikely that it would happen. So, you know, I know you're, you want to bring businesses in to the city, and I appreciate that, but, you know, downtown right now, we've got a courthouse, and we still have businesses following, I think we need to go a little different direction than what we have. I currently own two pieces of property in town that I pay taxes on. Like I said, you're going to raise my taxes, and then give a piece of property away, that we can use that money for, for the roads. So, again, I don't think that's fair to us taxpayers, I don't think it's good business sense to just give money away like that, or give a piece of property away. I don't know how many businesses that'll give a hundred fifty thousand dollar piece of property without getting any guarantees that they're going to get something in return. You know, I know I wouldn't. So, again, I'm going to state that I'm against giving them the property, but I'm not against them purchasing the property, I'm not against them leasing the property, you know, we need to get some type of tax revenue, you know, but we're going to have a bunch of government buildings that, uh, we're not going to be able to get any tax revenue on, and then you're going to rely heavily on citizens that have property, personal property, to actually make that up, you're not being fair to us. So, I want you to reconsider that. I want you, again, I want you to be good steward, that's why you were elected for here. So, I appreciate your time, I would also ask Councilman Brewster that you would recuse yourself on that vote for conflict of interest with your wife being the county commissioner of taxes.
Can I ask you a question?
You can.
Do you pay county taxes?
I do pay county taxes.
So you would rather take your county tax ba- dollars and buy the property? That, that don't make sense.
I would rather see, I would rather see the county go someplace else with their courthouse. You've got twenty years down here, we haven't done anything with the Center Park seventy five, there's nothing in there.
I'm just making sure that you realize you're not IDing the way you go with your tax money.
I understand, thank you.
Anyone else?
My name's Jerry R., I live on Old Carter Street here, thirty fifteen car, and I just want to thank everybody for getting through the gate, getting conversion, hopefully Highland will be done in a few weeks. Just want to thank everybody, I come in here grabbing two times a night, so I think I come in, thank you for giving it, yes, I appreciate it. I hope it probably is now, we got too many speakers with English.
As far as Highland, it'd be probably October before it gets completed.
That's what I figure. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Anyone else?
We've already been up our running rate all right, we're heading to lunch, so we've already been up.
I'm going to get all these streets down, you may be all of that. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes.
I've reviewed the minutes from our June seventeenth meeting, and they appear to accurately reflect what happened that night.
All right, thank you. And I want to entertain the motion in a second.
I'm going to approve the minutes, sir. Second.
Thank you. I'll, I'll, in favor, say aye. Oppose?
Mayor, I need to add something to the agenda at this point. We discussed the workshop, the paving of the parks and recreation, we'd already approved the money for it, we could get that project moving forward, so if I could add it to the agenda... Somewhere. I think we approved two hundred thousand.
Councilman Brewster, I was hoping to bring that to the August workshop, you know, after we've had time to review the different quotes as the staff with Ellis Crowe, you yourself?
I think Ellis already has these, reviewed and I reviewed, parks reviewed, so we got, got some good bids on them.
I still have those bids before me at this time.
Do you have those marked? No. Well, the money, we approved the money for, uh, Lions Club, Dog Park, there was one more.
Lions Club, the Van, Maryland Shelter, and the Dog Park, we approved that money, we just need to move forward.
And, and, we intend to move forward with all deliberate speed, I'd just like to workshop it in front of this council and the community, uh, before selecting a contractor to go with.
Would it be better if we go to a workshop?
We did.
Not, not the total.
Not, not the other one yet.
We did, because we wanted to get to the real, but we didn't know the, on this, uh, to do the whole entire part. So in August, let's, let's do that, in August, a workshop, manner of meeting, come to agree on it. Uh, the fuel bids.
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor, uh, both fuel bid for July was submitted by Pilot Travel Centers LLC, as you can see from our slide, it's a dollar ninety-eight for insulated, a dollar ninety-two diesel for a, a total fuel bid, fifteen thousand seven hundred twenty-three dollars and fifty cents.
I'll entertain the motion in a second.
Second.
I'll approve, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Next item on the agenda is confirmation of city recorder appointment.
Yes, I've, uh, appointed Nicole Curtis, uh, current staff member to this combined position, uh, finance director and city recorder, uh, this position includes general financial oversight on a day-to-day basis, uh, this position does require confirmation from this body.
I'll make this motion.
I'll have second.
I'll second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Next on the agenda is ordinance, uh, second reading, meaning the zoning map city Loudoun pursuant to thirteen dash seven dash two oh three, and thirteen dash seven two oh four, of the Tennessee Code and the rezoned property located, a river road, tax map zero forty, parcel zero seventy-two, approximately a hundred thirty-two plus acres. Mark one, low density residential district to R two, high residential, high density residential district.
Mr. Vice Mayor, this, uh, is the subject of your hearing, uh, prior to your meeting this evening, uh, it is a second reading, uh, it'll be passed, uh, this evening, it voted upon and approved, and it does come with a recommendation of the planning commission.
I'll entertain the motion in a second. Second.
I'll second.
On favor, no, that I will call.
Roll call, please. Councilman Brewster?
Aye.
Councilman James?
Aye.
Councilmember Benshaw? Vice Mayor Dixon?
Aye.
As long as it's passed, I'm second reading, uh, next thing on the agenda is amendment of two thousand eighteen nineteen fiscal year budget.
Yes, it's due at the end of every fiscal year, this is the budget amendment to the prior year budget, uh, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, uh, these changes in the line items occur mainly because of things we couldn't necessarily predict, uh, personnel changes, changes in, changes in family status, uh, does impact, uh, health insurance and benefits, such, such as these are, are the, are the main changes to this budget. We have, uh, moved monies, uh, to cover this from monies that were, were not spent on, on, in our nuisance abatement, uh, line item, uh, as well, other one item, so it is, um, you can see, I... Sorry. The, uh, general fund, uh, total expenditures line up with, uh, increases and decreases, so that it's a sixty-two thousand nine hundred dollar change.
With that said, I'll entertain a motion in a second.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second the motion.
I need you to roll call.
Councilmember Benshaw?
Aye.
Councilmember James?
Aye.
Councilmember Brewster?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dixon?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is amending personnel rules and regulations, uh, that was something I asked to be put on here, I'm going to table that issue till, uh, the August meeting. Next item on the agenda, uh, is an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of city Loudoun, Tennessee, amending chapter four, zoning districts by adding an additional section fourteen dash four sixteen, and R three, urban residential district.
Yes, this is an ordinance, uh, recommended by the planning commission, uh, they met this past week, this is a first reading, this has also come before you, uh, in August, it's a, uh, ordinance to amend, uh, the zoning code to actually add a new zoning district. In the residential sector, we have R one and R two, this adds R three, also known as Urban Residential, and it has a purpose, um, the, the development that we're seeing requested, uh, coming, uh, before the planning commission at this time, uh, is asking for a higher density, uh, residential unit count than is currently allowed in R one or R two, thus the drafting of R three, uh, to facilitate and encourage this type of development.
At this time, I'd like to entertain the motion in a second.
I make a motion to, uh, rezon, uh, establish an R three zoning. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember James?
Aye.
Councilmember Brewster?
Aye.
Councilmember Benshaw?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dixon?
Aye.
Instead of going to the resolutions, we're going to skip on down to the ordinance, first reading, which will be number four. It's a meaning of zoning map of the city of Loudoun, Tennessee, pursuant to thirteen dash seven dash two oh three, and thirteen dash seven dash two oh four, the Tennessee Code and the double to rezon property located on East Lee Highway, described as tax map oh three three, part of parcel zero sixteen, and part of parcel zero twenty-three. Parcel thirty-eight point five acres, be rezoned from Loudoun Gavitt, zoning A one agricultural forestry district, and Loudoun Gavitt zoning A two rural residential district to M two heavy industrial district.
Sorry, Vice Mayor, is there a reason why you had that?
In the legislature, staff.
I think, um, I mean, I defer to your opinion, Attorney Fry, but, um, Vice Mayor Dixon, we wanted to consider all the ordinances together, that, that all the purpose was changed.
I said, you're saying, I thought you said, no. Keep them all together, and that way you're going into the resolutions, so you just go through all of them. I made the, entertain the motion in a second.
Motion.
Next second.
I'll roll, now this is, and we do the follow-up.
Councilmember Brewster?
Aye.
Councilmember Benshaw?
Aye.
Councilmember James?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dixon?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, we need to schedule a public hearing on that as well, I would suggest six twenty-five.
Six twenty-five?
Eight.
Eight?
Oh, ten, six twenty-five?
Six twenty-five, six twenty-five on eight nineteen. Confused me.
Okay, we got resolutions, uh, resolution calling for public hearing on the proposed annexation of territory to the city of Loudoun by owner consent and approving, a plan of service, approximately thirty-eight point five plus acres or mining service, on the East Lee Highway, tax map thirty-three, parcel twenty-three, and sixteen.
Yes, this does come at the request of the owners, this property is on the north side of the river, it is adjacent to, uh, the Sugarland Industrial Park, and it is contiguous to, uh, the current city limits, it's a request by the owner to annex this property, uh, into the city of Loudoun, uh, together with your resolution, is a draft plan of services, uh, also submitted for your approval, and you can consider this resolution and this annexation process, you know, running parallel with, uh, the rezoning request, uh, from, from rural residential, uh, to heavy manufacturing.
Any questions on that? I'll entertain the motion for a, in a second. Second.
I'll second.
On the favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Next item is authorizing the memorandum of understanding of the city of Loudoun and Loudoun County regarding certain real estate property.
Yes, um, I distributed prior to the meeting, it's a, um, a revised memorandum of understanding, uh, it was edited by the county, uh, not make the website this past Friday, included in the memorandum of understanding, uh, as drafted last week, where it's provisions one, two, and three at the end, uh, the revised document includes provision four, I'll just read it out loud, uh, the parties agreed to proceed in good faith towards the execution of a definitive real estate sales contract, consistent herewith, contains such terms, representations, warranties, covenants, conditions, and indemnities as are mutually acceptable to the parties, and as are otherwise typically included in agreements of such type. Execution of the real estate contract shall be a condition to any liability of the parties hereunder.
I'll entertain the motion in a second.
Make this motion.
Second. I'll be the second.
One thing on the, our in memorandum is, uh, the wording says the city will be informed of all designs, planning, and construction activity, I would like that to read, that the city will have, will need to approve all designs, planning, and construction activities.
This is the second bullet point on the screen, uh, it's currently drafted, uh, it specifies, uh, as Councilman Brewster stated, the city is to be informed of all design, planning, and construction activities, uh, his preferences that the city, uh, be allowed to approve.
Couple of issues that's been brought to me is, first off, I don't know if the county has talked about price, but the city hasn't, we've not talked about it in workshop, we've not talked about it in a meeting, so I'm not happy with the price at the moment. Because I haven't had any input in that, I don't think the citizens have either. And has there, do we know if they looked at any other property other than, or is that just where they've decided, is there any other property that's, you know, out of here, because they're having their meeting right now too, which is, I hope that is a little awkward on the county side.
I think they wanted that property because it was close to the panic. And police department.
Would it, you may be on access, would it affect the boat dock?
No.
Or the fishing, or the parking area?
Absolutely, no.
That won't be touched?
Not a bit. Parking's not like that.
So when we say the purchase price shall be a dollar, they're purchasing length? They're, they're purchasing all of it?
That's why this memorandum is, is, is currently drafted, um, it can be changed, and it can be changed, but it's, if there's, if there's disagreement with the framework of the transaction as suggested by this memorandum of understanding, now's the time to make the changes, it's easier to make the changes now than to execute this memorandum of understanding as drafted, and then try and make changes later.
No, I don't want to approve it, and then want to make changes, because once it's approved, it's approved. I don't, I don't like the price then, and I don't think we've discussed it as a council enough, and I don't like the price of a dollar.
What did you got? Just keep them a quick length, do you?
I don't know, I don't like it, I mean, I've heard people, like, a lease on it, you know, and, and they talked about that, but, um, Buddy said he was going to come back with some benefits for the city, but I, I have not seen anything with the list of benefits for the city yet. Is there a thing that you've seen? That I'm not, I mean, I know the meeting that Buddy was at, he said that there would be, you know, benefits for the city, but I haven't gotten those.
Do we want to tell you this issue till the next workshop, where possibly Buddy can be here?
I think what they're needing to do, they're, you know, this can be negotiated, but they're needing to, if they're going to build, they have the money to build, and they need to go ahead and start core sampling Atlantis, that's mainly what this was about.
Yeah, I have no problem with them core sampling Atlantis, I don't, I don't have an issue with that, but I don't, I do have an issue, I don't like the fact that it says a price of a dollar. like the fact that it says a price of a dollar.
That's normally in, in your real estate transaction, you give away a quick price. You always put a dollar.
I'm not sure. I don't give a dollar.
Mayor?
Yes.
Assistant Mayor Harrison, him and I talked, he had mentioned that he had approached two of the county commissioners that we might want to be asking fair market value for that property. And they both told him that if they wouldn't pay fair market value, they could just go back to the historic courthouse.
Thank you. Do, do we want to table this till August? Or just lay it on regular memorandum of understanding right there?
What, what is it you want? They have to know what you want.
Well, I wish they were here and I'd talk to them, but I know they're in a meeting, that's why they're not here, they're not here on purpose, or they're in a meeting.
It don't make sense to ask fair market val- value and take your product, county property taxes that you're paying to buy a piece of property from the city because it, either way, it's going to be the same. The, the county tax money that, that we're going to, if you want to ask for, say a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, that's county taxpayer money that you're paying. Instead of charging them for that land, let, let money go into the building of the courthouse. It's like you're robbing Peter to pay Paul.
Yeah, but then that money would go into our city budget and would help us with other wrongs.
Councilmember Davis, you did, um, ask what, what benefits would fall to the city should this transaction move forward. I'll just point to the second, whereas, whereas the city desires for the courthouse square to return to substantially the same condition as prior to the fire and that the historic courthouse be utilized as a museum, archive, and/or be available as a venue style event center for any other public or civic's purpose. Part of, part of the thought process, and it, it has been discussed at numerous meetings, but not, but not public meetings up until this point, which is now is a good time to discuss it, is that the framework of this deal allows for a two-for-one. The city of Loudon would have two substantial, you know, multi-billion dollar structures rather than just a single version now, and that the historic building would be, and it, and it does, it does state that here, and it would be further memorialized in the agreement, that it is, it is consideration. Part of the consideration, not just the dollar, but part of the consideration would be that the historic courthouse structure be moved into alternative uses such as a museum or archive or venue style event center. That's why in the, now therefore provision, it's in, it says they, it's in consideration of before government.
I mean, I want courthouse in Loudon, but I haven't heard no talk of it moving elsewhere either. Um, but I don't, I mean...
You would take less if related action to move, again, we see.
Yeah.
It's not going to happen.
So I mean, I think this is kind of based on fear of courthouse moving, and I don't think that's the idea. Jack?
Yeah, I'd just like to add a few things. Uh, one of the big, the bigger picture here that we need to think about is traffic counts. Uh, currently you have about twelve thousand counts that are coming across that bridge every day. Uh, in order for us to sustain more retail to our area, we need more traffic counts. So the thought process is by being able to establish more traffic down here in this area, it will also help our retail and our development as future years come on. So having this down there, and if you look at, out at Sugarland Mountain every Wednesday, look at how many cars are parked on the sides of the road out there. That's traffic that can be coming downtown. Hopefully, you know, whether they're waiting for court or whatever they're doing, they can shop, grab a cup of coffee, maybe a sandwich, whatever, whatever the case is. We need all the traffic counts we can get downtown, especially from a, from a retail standpoint. So I'd just like to encourage you to think about that as you're thinking the bigger picture of what a dollar's worth or what your benefit is. You're benefiting from the retail side of traffic generation.
Okay, here's another thing. I have just first person tell me that. I have not heard that court, all of the court that's been at Sheriff's Office will be moved down here.
And I don't know that case either. I'm just hoping that that's what happens because the only day we need as much traffic as we can get, like I said, we have twelve thousand trips. Uh, to put that in perspective, when you look at three twenty-one, you've got about twenty-nine thousand trips a day. So you have about twelve. So for us to really boost our retail, we need more trips down in our downtown sector.
And with the new design, we're talking three courtroom versus one, which means we can have, the not judicial district is four counties. If we have more courtrooms, we can have more court come in from the other counties. A cert court judge, criminal court judge, they all travel four counties. If we've got more courtrooms, that's more traffic coming to Loudoun County to court. If they have a special setting from Megas County, that they need a special judge, they're going to send it to Loudoun County.
And I, I mean, the courthouse being there is fine, I understand we're not going to be able to get a retail business in there with that size and building, that cost of the building. I understand that.
So how will the construction of the courthouse in any way inhibit our plans to redo the waterfront?
No, um, Mayor Bradshaw has, has been to a couple of prior meetings before this body, and he's, he's probably then printouts and renderings of what the current plan is for the building. It's a, it's a substantial building and, um, it's a, it's a, it's a major investment. And, uh, I believe, my personal belief, that, that it would only enhance the waterfront, especially as you approach downtown from the Highway eleven bridge.
I understand that, but has anyone stressed that fact and looked, would in some way inhibit what we plan to do?
No, what we plan to do is, is mainly on the, the more visually friendly side of the bridge, which is, which is, which is the Hudson property, um, the two bridges.
Well, I know what we discussed, not in regards, but we discussed a waterfront walkway from, from what we call the, the harbor there all the way around. And my question to you was, will that courthouse being constructed there in any way affect that, that walkway or construction of that walkway?
The, the current architect...
Has anybody asked that question?
Yes, um, I, I started in a meeting, just a, a, a personal meeting I had with Mayor Bradshaw, um, with Michael Brady, NBI, the, the architectural firm that's involved in the project with the county. And, um, I was given assurances at that time that, that the Riverwalk and the courthouse could, could live together.
Okay. Well, I, I mean, because I would not, I would not want to see it stop and doing the Riverwalk and, and, uh, marking it every...
Marked for weeks.
Add a little bit to what Tammy's points earlier, Council. You asked about the boat parking. Initially, when that was discussed by Wes Thompson and a couple of officials, it was, uh, it was proposed then by the previous council, yes, you can park there, but this is property that's going to be used down the road. They stood up, oh, we understand, that's, we don't want to stop progress. So that's a long, there, there's no permanent boat parking on the property. And at any given time, I've never seen over ten or twelve boats, or maybe at times between twenty there, but I think we need to consider that. It's been temporary parking, it was allowed, you know, for officials. And yes, Tom and I have talked, Jack, we've all talked about the riverfront walkway. It will work, the annex will work with this, as well as the, the parking for the boats that we, in Loudoun, park. I just want to thank you. You guys have a question?
Thank you.
Any more discussion? We have a motion on the table about memorandum of understanding on Loudoun City and Loudoun County. That's the third time that I've asked that, and the rubber bruised the border. You, you gotta do it three times, so that motion, we're down there.
What would be the next step on that?
Can we, my county mayor has permission here in our next workshop to discuss this more in detail? Where they stand with it, where we stand with it? I mean, because we've not had any action, you know, action between the, the two. I mean, and I just, I feel like I'm, I'm in the dark on it. I don't know, I haven't, like I said, I haven't even heard that, you know, the courts from the Sheriff's Office put on ground and over here.
That's the longer range.
Well, if we had those county officials to come to our meeting, you know, to maybe sit down and, and talk more about it, give more details, you know, and the city be able to answer some of the questions they have.
I would like that, I think citizens would like that, from what I've seen. Because there are going to be more questions, and, and I don't know.
I think we could, um, extend that invitation and, and have them at our office workshop.
That work? All right, next item on the agenda is the acceptance of a grant from Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation for the fire department equipment.
Yes, thanks to Chief Brubaker and Loudoun County Fire Department. Uh, we received notification, uh, they've been approved for an award for a grant from Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation. It's a hundred percent grant, there is no match involved. Uh, it'll be used to purchase six sets of firefighter bunker gear, coats, pants, helmets, boots, gloves, and hoods, and amount of twenty thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars.
Sounds good. Congratulations to you.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir. I'll entertain a motion and a second.
Motion. A second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
District, district, right?
Thank you.
We thank you. Approval of out-of-state tracking, the police department for two sergeants.
Yes, the current set personnel rules require council approval for out-of-state travel. Chief Webb and Loudoun Police Department request permission for, for two officers to attend a conference in Georgia.
I have a second.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations. Chief. Do you sergeant want to get those two? Uh, next item is approval of authorized vehicle replacement for model upgrade.
Yes, this is a forward government vehicle program. Chief Webb identified a vehicle in his fleet that's ready for a model upgrade to the current model year. Not included in your, your packet Friday, but a little less listed in your, your memorandum. It was the upcharge of six hundred and ninety-five dollars, and that that has been inserted into your, your resolution.
Would you leave? I'll entertain a motion and a second.
I move to approve.
Continue with the question.
Second.
My second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the next item on the agenda is to approve the change in paving thickness from Duracap.
Yes, after considering multiple bids, this council contracted with Duracap Asphalt Paving Company to pave a list of roads in the city of Loudon for a sum serving of four hundred and seventy-six thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars. However, uh, since the time of that contract, asphalt prices have increased, there was an increase, escalation provision in the contract, and it has been determined that Ward Avenue, after milling, the determination is in need of much thicker paving cap. Uh, the, uh, the additional inches in measurement of asphalt causes a total increase in the contract price of forty-five thousand, five hundred, eight dollars and forty-eight cents.
Any discussion over that?
Can you review? This is what you agree with? I mean, I just want to make sure, because it's been a long time since we paved roads in Loudoun, something happened to any of the other roads.
We've had a, a lot of eyes on this, a lot of discussion, um, that SOC visits with, together with our public works director, Councilmember Brewster, Councilmember James, and, and we believe this is the best course of action in terms of the amount of money to be spent.
Did you get that price on the milling?
Yes, I did. The milling for Ward Avenue, just the milling portion, twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and forty-nine dollars.
I hate that a hundred, or I hate that a ninety-six thousand dollar job turns into a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar. I'm disappointed in this contractor, when he started milling it, he should have informed you immediately that, that he was cutting the base out of it. And I talked to John Ezeck, burdenist, too. What I would like to recommend is to put three inches of base on it and let it sit for a couple of years, then come back and get it. I will say that the base, if you put the base down, we both know, and everybody knows this room, it's not as smooth as Blackstone, they're at, they're cutting the top cap. But it is much more durable. And if you're going to come back, the top that you put on this base, what he proposed to do is put down, I think, uh, inch?
Two and a half inch.
Two and a half inches of binder, or if you're two and a half inches, I'll poke, but it, but it was inch of binder, then, then a topping.
Yeah.
The problem with that is the topping will give way, and you can't go back and cap over it, you're going to have to ground it again, you're going to have to, because that's what the topping does. However, if you, if you just put down the base, they put two inches of base down, it wouldn't be as smooth, but it'd be a lot more durable. And then when you come back to do it again, nine times out of ten, you wouldn't have to do that, but put your topping on to that particular thing. That, that's, that's, I would think that that would be the way to go. Now that, that's what I would think, because it's going to be a lot more durable. All, all I'm just going to add to it by putting the topping on it is make it smoother. It's not going to make it more durable. I guarantee that it's not going to do that.
What's the permeability of it? Or what's the permeability of the base?
The durability of...
Permeability, water permeability.
Oh, 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 well, I've got, I've got a parking lot in, in Sweetwater right now that was done nine years ago. It's not been clogged, and it's not been lapped since nine years, it's still in good shape, you know, so I, I don't know. And it, and it was, you know, traffic every day, five days, six days a week, you know. So it was only that it wasn't traffic. We've got the binder on our street, it's been on our twelve years, and nothing, that's perfectly good. All I'm saying, if we just put the topping on it now, in a couple of years, that topping's going to give, give away because it, it don't hold up like the binder. The binder, if we put it down now, let it sit for a couple of years, and then we look at it again. Because them hollering sinkholes and, and want to charge twenty-one thousand dollars to dig out thirteen inches of mud, I, I just don't think it's money well spent. To make it really durable, I just don't think one inch of binder will do that. It really doesn't. And, you know, if you want to put two inches of binder in the topping, that's all right, but I'm sure that's going to make that price go crazy. You know, so I, I, I mean, I don't know, I mean, you know.
I'd like to see you get some estimates on what three...
You can't, you can't blame the contractor because he grounded, that was in the contract. If we had a holy quarter, we would have known not to ground it. But that's, you can't look back and make things happen, you can't do that. You just have to go on.
All right, I want to give the statement.
Thank you, Councilmember, uh, Councilwoman. I'm Brian Smith, Duracap Asphalt. Hello, uh, thank you guys for being here, thank you for the contract that we've done. I hope you guys so far have enjoyed and, and, and...
you guys so far have enjoyed and, and, and really appreciated what we've done for it. We have, uh, we brought this, this episode to your guys' attention once we found it, we didn't find it in the beginning of the process, it was toward the end, there's this, there's an area of twelve, twelve foot by a hundred and thirty foot that's, that's basically exposed, that I was, that I was told, um, you guys have asked for a binder and, and then a surface course, here is our feelings on the binder and the surface course, you gotta have room to put the binder, and right now, you, you mill an inch and three quarter, or inch, is that right, inch and three quarter, and we put back an inch and a quarter?
Correct.
All right, so, that being said, if you put three inches, you're either gonna be up on the curb, higher than the, uh, catch basins that's out there, I understand that there's a curb and gutter out there, so the purpose of that is trying to get back flush with the existing curb and gutter.
Well, even in your, your estimates or your, you said you would have to go over the gutter anyway.
Yeah, it's... That, that was with the, yes, sir. Yeah, that's correct.
We're down to the dirt, I mean, it's...
Yeah, and, you know...
Disappointing me, it's why you guys didn't contact our public works, say, hey, this, we're, we're milling away your base here.
Again, we did, once we found it, but it wasn't found to the very end, so, when we were, we started on the opposite side of the road, that, you know, that this area is, that's batting, so, we're on the, say, with the east or north side, uh, then we, we mill across to the west, once we mill, we're milling a seven foot pass, and there's seven of that twelve foot that's been exposed, okay, well, we're already all the way across the road, and we got finished, so, um, my understanding is that your representation, uh, the public works director was in and out of the job, and, uh, you know, we, uh, you know, we done what we were contracted to do.
Yeah, I realize.
There's no question, I would, I wouldn't question.
I, uh, you know, I wanted to talk to you about the permeability, talk about the binder and the binder setting, and yes, that happens in applications, but it's not a good application, if you have binder, the permeability of that binder, um, that, you're right by the strength, it is the strength of the, the road, but it is permeable, permeable, so with the, my understanding, I haven't seen it, I'm just going by what I've been told, but my understanding, there's areas of dirt showing out there.
Dirt, I saw it, there that.
And we proposed, you mentioned the, the twenty-six thousand dollar, twenty-one thousand dollar dig out, you know, we're, we're proposing in that area to get to, to a road spec, to a, you know, whatever that spec is, eight inches of stone, two inches of binder, um, whatever the case is, but I, I would not recommend putting binder over top of dirt, because the permeability of that binder, it will in three years, uh, it will cancer out, without cancering out, where it'll spread, and you, your area of concern will be larger than what it is today, or what that, with putting binder alone in it, because it is...
Well, I, I agree that, with that, but, do you think that the, uh, the way y'all proposed to do it would be better than, or as good as, or, you know, I don't know, because I'm not a fan of it.
Right, I mean, I, I feel like that they have gave you a good proposal, as far as, hey, let's, let's give you another inch and a half, I mean, we, we milled an inch and a quarter, there's some, I don't know the percentage of what's left out there that is asphalt and what is dirt, so, but I do know that the twelve foot by a hundred and thirty foot is dirt, so...
But you, you did say that, if I understood it correctly before I left the meeting that day, that y'all would, the way you proposed to do it with the binder and the topping, that you would warranty everything with the exception of the section where you said was solid?
Yeah, my understanding is that we are proposing to do another inch and a quarter of surface mix in, okay, so, we would have two and a half inches of total surface mix, where you did have an inch and a three quarter of asphalt on the road, so you're gaining, you know, a half inch, half inch, but three quarters an inch, um, it is in our opinion to se- to seal it off again, to use that surface mix, we have, uh, provided a, what I'm saying is a discount, uh, for our labor with you guys doing that, I asked a question too, I asked, uh, to the, to the gentleman that bid the job, I said, why wasn't binder discussed, and he said it was discussed in a meeting, uh, but you, but the council or whoever was in that meeting decided to do a hundred percent surface mix.
It was discussed.
But, uh, that was what was proposed, I'm not sure if that's accurate or not, but I know that we are doing two and a half, we're proposing two and a half, we had, you get them to do an inch and a quarter, then we're gonna add another inch and a quarter, it'd be two and a half.
So, so you're telling me, two and a half inches of topping is, is better than three inches of binder on dirt?
On dirt, no, no, we...
Wait, but you, you need to go to the street before you talk about it, because it's not just that one section, there's dirt showing through the whole seat, the street, they, they milled it all up, down to the dirt, rock and dirt.
We milled an inch and three quarter down to the dirt.
That's right, that's, that's what disappoints me, once the milling started and you seen how thin it was, that's when, in my opinion, you should have stopped and contacted our public works and say, hey, we don't need to mill this, we need to go ahead and put the topping on this.
But I'm just here to speak on Duracap, I don't know all the details, but I do know that I was told that we milled, and the side we milled on all had asphalt, but this twelve by thirty, or twelve by a hundred and thirty, I can't argue that fact, but we are trying, we are here, I'm here, to defend Duracap, to make sure you guys get what you paid for, and to do the best quality job for that road, now, that being said, in our opinion, dig it out, put the binder in it, and then topping, just like this one was before, and somebody's determined that that twelve by thirty is the most critical area, not the whole road or not the whole...
The, the thirty, thirty area you're talking about is the parking, for, for parking of the street, it, there's no traffic on it.
Right.
It's the shoulder.
There again, I mean, it, you know, it's part of the, I mean, I don't, you know, it's part of the road, it is in the road, but I mean, I understand it's part of, but if it were mine, I would not, I would not, binder, I would, I would either stone and binder it and surface it, or surface it, to get the road sealed back off, because the word, we're waiting for answers, and this road probably getting worse, if you went out there with a loaded truck, it's probably worse today than it was last week when we all were, when you guys met out there.
Well, it's a fact, if you give some rain on the lotto, it's gonna get a whole lot of them.
Yes, sir.
If, if we went with the two and a half inches of topping, like it is, that's forty-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-three dollars more additional to the ninety-six, is that forty-seven thousand negotiable? Can you negotiate that?
No, sir, uh, we get, gave you a discount on that, um, on that price.
That, that discount on that price was probably your estimator made it instead.
No, sir, that discount on that price.
That's what your, your owner said.
I'm not, I'm not sure.
He counted, he counted man hours for trucking, and the trucks running anyway, I think what he said, but...
He said something about the man hours, I, I don't really know, but...
I know that if you took your, you asked for the value of that milling, if you take the value of that milling, your paving portion of that road would be in the range of forty-nine thousand dollars, uh, we're asking for forty-two thousand dollars, which is a difference, a five thousand dollars, we're putting the same spec, the same amount of road, but what we did was deduct the labor, because we're already out there, so there's five thousand dollars.
That's what he was talking about, but my main concern is, other than the area that he says is a parking area, the area you say is a problem area, the rest of the road done the way you proposed to do it, will be warranted.
Correct.
And I need to hear because...
Yeah.
If, if you're comfortable enough to warrant it, I feel comfortable to take it away, okay?
Well, that's correct, I mean, we, we discussed that, I know that that was in discussion, that the whole road will be warranted.
Because I'm not gonna say to you, hey, I do your job, and you're still, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna stand behind you, because that's just, that'd be too large.
Right.
Hey, that's, I, you know, I've, I've got no more questions, and I can do it with what you've got.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else?
All in that discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. Second.
My second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
And you, you say aye?
Aye.
Approving the paving. Next item on the agenda...